Going to call the November 3, 2025 Regular Council, Buscira City Council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Myers?
President.
DeShawn?
Here.
Slater?
Here.
Sherri?
Here.
Spiegel?
Here.
Me?
Here.
Mr. President?
Mrs. DeShawn?
Before we start, we have some amendments to make to the agenda.
Is that, is that a fact?
The first amendment that needs to be made to the agenda, and I'll ask the question, is why you did not have Clerk Mossdeller place on the agenda the Ordinance Number 36-2025, which deals with Norfolk Southern Signal Rates, gets up for its second reading. And again, the only way that Mrs. Mossdeller, I'm hoping I'm pronouncing your last name right, Michelle, is if, you know, you as the council president would have told her that, or the individual that you hired to train her would have brought that to her attention. So again, I'm asking why that is not appearing on the agenda. I want it to appear on the agenda.
What ordinance is this, Vicki?
So you'll need to have in there a section for consideration of proposed legislation for the second time, and everything that follows after that, except as first reading, public participation, what have you.
When did it have its first reading?
Our last council meeting was at the 14th.
Was it on the agenda on the 14th?
Yes, it was.
Well, I will take responsibility for that. It was an oversight, Vicki, and I apologize.
Then, under Refer Back to Originating Committee, you will also need to have inserted there Proposed Ordinance Number 36-2025. And let me say this. Did we even have an agenda on the 14th?
That's why I just asked if it was on the agenda.
Because you weren't doing the agendas, but we did have a first reading of that ordinance. So regardless of whether it was on the agenda or not, you were present as the council president and knew that we had a first reading on that. So again, back to Refer to Originating Committee, we do need to insert Proposed Ordinance Number 36-2025. That should appear before Proposed Ordinance Number 37, for doing it in the proper order. Then, under Committee, Report on Pending Legislation, we need to insert whether we're going to have favorable or unfavorable to Proposed Ordinance Number 36-2025, and Health and Safety is the one that will give the report. And under Proposed Ordinance Number 44-2025, which is still under Committee Report on Pending Legislation, we have that titled as Appropriations with Outside Contracts. That should be stricken, and it should say Transfers, because there is a difference between appropriations and transfers, which I am going to assume that, you know, the individual that's training, Michelle, will be pointing that out, as she hasn't done that yet. Then, again, on the next page, under Further Consideration of Pending Legislation, where it has Ordinance 37-2025, because this is a regular piece of legislation and not an emergency, it should not appear. We will not be voting on that particular piece. So that, that shouldn't even be on the agenda. Then, when we come to ordinance underneath that, Ordinance Number 43-2025, again, it says the subject is appropriations within street lighting. Because the appropriations deal with more than just street lighting, there's others, we just always say appropriations. So we should strike "within street lighting." Then next, under Ordinance 44-2025, where it states appropriations with outside contracts, that should be stricken, and we should insert the word "transfers," just so we have, you know, proper identification of what we're reading and voting on. And then lastly, the last page, under Ordinance Number 235-2025, dealing with adoption of city investment policy, that again is not an emergency piece. So that should not be on the agenda, because we will not be suspending and waiving the rules and voting on it tonight. It'll just have its first reading.
Do you have a corrected agenda that you have prepared?
I just have my agenda that I printed off today, that I've handwritten on.
Could, could I see that?
You're giving it back to me, because I will be following this.
Yeah, 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 I just, I'd just like to look at it.
Would you like to come and get it?
to make Vicki's amendments, and then I'd like to go into a recess, and I'm going to take this and copy it and get a copy for all the council members, so we can more easily follow along with the amendments that Vicki has brought up. If someone wants to make a motion to amend the agenda per-
I'm motion for the amendments that Mrs. DeShawn has mentioned.
Mr. Myers made a motion to amend the agenda per Vicki's amendments, seconded by Councilman Me. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we're gonna go into a 10, oh, Mr.-
Before you do, I don't want to get on the record that I had to be out here at 9:15 today.
Okay. I'm gonna go into a recess for 10 minutes at 7:09. We're back from recess at 7:15 PM. We have the amended agenda. Continuing on with it is the granting permission for visitors to speak, and I have Mike Keefe as the first speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm here tonight to do a public service announcement. Omni Fiber is going to be doing their last three phases here in town. The F-14 permit and the F-17 permit are going to be released tomorrow at their pre-construction meeting. The contractors, Davy Resource Group out of Kent, Omni Fiber does go through quite a few contractors and construction crews, because they're poor planning. So the F-14 permit is basically everything between North Sandusky Street and Plymouth Street. So you got Wingert, Maple, Elm, Milo, Woodruff, High Street, Sherman, Teddy, East Irving, Songer Street, Dudley, Emerson, Lawn, Dunn, and North Sandusky Street itself, plus A-Roy Road bore crossing. F-17 permit is West Mary Street, West Perry Street, West River, Myers, Sears, Tiffin Avenue, Willard Avenue, Hill Street over by Abida, and North Pleasant, North Pleasant Hill. F-18 is Garnet Court. Garnet Court just got done being rebuilt for their sewer and street projects, so we're looking at that pretty heavily, making sure they can possibly reduce the amount of bore and excavation involved. Gaia Street, Bland Avenue, Franklin, West Irving, Shaver Avenue, Tiffin Street, Fremont Street, Ora Avenue, Willard Avenue, Monette Street, and North Sandusky Street, again with another crossing. So if you have any questions, see any water coming up in your sidewalk or in your front yard, give us a call, so we can get out there and get things taken care of and patched up. If you guys have any questions.
Is this the end for them, then?
Yes, this is the last three phases of Omni Fiber here in town.
Have they given you a timeline for this yet?
They are, they are wanting to be done by the end of the year. And of course, they're not starting construction until, well, the permits get released tomorrow. So it's gonna take two days, almost three days, for USIC to mark underground telephone. It's gonna take another week, week and a half, for Columbia Gas to mark their lines. So this was supposed to be all done by now, but, you know, we're gonna be coming into bad weather here another couple weeks, so.
This weekend, I read. It's gonna snow.
In Alaska, maybe. So, Aaron?
With the mess ups from Omni Fiber so far, who do they contact again to have those things fixed? Like, they dug up somebody's concrete driveway on East Charles and put some-
That has been remedied.
Okay.
That restoration has been complete. Concrete work was done a week ago, last Friday. Yes, it was.
I got a phone call this weekend.
Well, then forward that to me. As far as I know, when I did the drive-through, all the asphalt and concrete repairs were done, except for a section of asphalt over on East Street, just south of East Mansfield Street.
This is at the end of East Charles?
The far end of East Charles?
Towards the tracks, yeah.
Okay, again, email that address to me, so I can take care of it, since Simonson is gonna be back in town tomorrow, that they're doing a bore on North Sandusky Street at Perry, from the east side at Speedway to the west side at Circle K.
Okay.
So, any other questions?
I'm assuming Wingert Street was all, water line breaks down through there, or?
Yes. The water, water service line at Plymouth Street, we aren't sure if there was a leak already when that happened, but it just happened, the line was, I think the line was, was in poor shape. But I know Simonson had, I think there were five or six water service lines hit, and two or three gas lines. And most of the gas hits were over off of Beverly, so, because they were missmarked. So, all right.
Any final questions? Moving on, continuing with granting permission for visitors to speak, are there any visitors that would like to address council? Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Angie Rayborn, 218 East Center Street. I would like to request that Kurt Fankhauser stop putting pictures of minors on Facebook. Stop modifying pictures of minors and putting them on Facebook. It's not right. It's creepy. Leave the kids alone. And I'd also like to return your hate mail that you sent me.
Can you guys pass this down to Kurt, okay? Thank you.
Additional visitors' participation. If anybody else would like to come to the podium, please state your name and address.
My name is Cory. I'm 15 years old, and I'm here tonight because of something that happened to me this past Saturday.
Sir, can you state your-
No.
-name and complete address?
He's a minor.
He's a minor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm an ass. A picture of me was taken without my consent or my parents' consent. It involves City Council President Kurt Fankhauser and has his campaign for a candidate running for council president, not Kevin Myers. My mom and I were simply on our way home when we saw City Council at-large candidate Alina Fox, and stopped to say hello. That's all it was. Later that night, my mom found that my picture had been posted on the public Facebook page called Citizens for a More Transparent Bus Service. That page was originally created and used by the City Council President years ago. Though it appears there may now be more than one person with access to post on it, regardless, the photo could have only been taken from one angle, and he was the only person standing there who could have taken it. My mom respectfully asked that the post to be taken down. Instead of doing the right thing, the next day, new photoshopped images of me appeared on that same page, this time showing me holding political signs for the other candidate. When I spoke up for myself on that page, I was bullied by grown men in this community. They made disgusting comments, saying things like, "My mom must be a whore," and that I don't know who my dad is, all because I have red hair. The person behind the page even called my mom an idiot who took their kid to a rally. To that person, I'd just like to say it wasn't a rally, and he spelled rally wrong. That's not politics, that's harassment. It's inappropriate, it's creepy, and it's wrong. Under Ohio Revised Code 2917.21, telecommunications harassment, it's illegal in Ohio to use any telecommunications devices, including social media, email, text, or online comments, to harass, intimidate, or abuse another person. I'm clearly not an adult. I'm 15 years old, and the fact that grown men use social media to insult, demean, or target me makes it even more serious. Many police departments and prosecutors across the country would take harassment of minors through social media as an aggravating factor. I also want to point out that election laws were violated when my image was used in a political campaign without permission. Yet nobody did anything about it. The people who should protect minors looked the other way. I shouldn't have come up here to tell adults how to behave, but here I am doing it anyway. Kids deserve respect and protection, not to be used for political aims. Thanks to you, Alina and Kevin, who have been real, a real support throughout this. I hope when voters go to the polls tomorrow, they remember who's on the side of kids. And Vicki will miss you. Thanks.
Good evening. Alina Fox, 401 Ridge Avenue. Good evening to Buscira citizens, to Buscira City Council, and Buscira's administration. I'm speaking tonight to encourage all to check in with family and friends as daylight hours and sunshine get shorter in this fall season. Those that may deal with SAD, which is seasonal affective disorder, may be more at risk for depression as a result. Being our neighbor's keeper doesn't have to cost anything. It can be a smile, a short conversation, and a caring hug that makes a difference to someone. In addition, knowing that we had a loss of 40 jobs in our community, please lend a hand, share, and care as you are able until the diamond wipes workers are able to gain new employment. My prayers and supports go out to you all. Anyone that might want resume help or practice interviewing skills, feel free to contact me at Facebook at Alina T. Fox. Reminder that elections are held tomorrow at Crawford County Fairgrounds Youth Building. Polls open at 6:30 AM and close at 7:30 PM. Please remember to ask to see a write-in list of candidates, as there are several running for the City Council for election. And call the Crawford County Board of Elections at 419-562-8721 with any further questions. Finally, I would like to again call for the immediately, immediate and unconditional resignation of Buscira City Council Kurt Fankhauser, President, excuse me, Kurt Fankhauser. I witnessed behaviors personally and on social media this week that I find unprofessional and unbecoming of a person in a leadership position. Your flagrant and disrespectful flaunting of Buscira city ordinances and election laws are further proof of your being unfit as a leader. The lack of respect for which you have for the very laws that Buscira City Council has legislated is beyond disappointing. People remember one's legacy by the way in which another has made them feel. You, sir, have made me feel much disappointment and disgust. Resign and allow our city to be led by one more able to govern and to leave a better reputation and legacy for this City Council. Thank you.
Additional public participation.
Harry Diver, 1928 Marion Road, Buscira, Ohio. Hopefully on a little bit, a little lighter light here, a little lighter, whatever I want to say here. I am running for Ward 3, writing candidate, okay? The reason why I'm doing that is because things, the way things have happened the last couple of years. I was born and raised in Crawford County. I'm 73 years old. I've been in the trucking business, I've been in the horse-drawn carries business, I've had many other jobs. The last job I've had, which I was made fun of, was kiddy pedal tractor pulling for kids in the state of Ohio.
Point of order.
Hold on, Mr. Diver. What's your point of order, Ms. Sherri?
We already had a conversation where people weren't to be doing this. You were reminded of that. You gave them a week to do it. They've already all done this over and over, and now we're doing it again? You're not allowed to run for an office at the podium.
We've had candidates before in past elections-
And we had this whole conversation.
-come up here. Show me an ORC ordinance that says that somebody can't come to the podium and announce their candidacy during a public participation, First Amendment, freedom of speech. I think you're, I don't know what your law you're talking about, Ms. Sherri.
Kurt, just forget it, okay? I think everybody in the, in the Buscira city limits knows what's going on. I don't need to say anymore. Thank you.
Additional public participation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Myers.
I'd like to request that you allow Mr. Spiegel the same amount of time that you just allowed Mr. Diver.
That's all right. I don't need any more time. He kind of chased me out of here.
I, I'm sorry, Mr. Diver, that one of the council members infringed on your First Amendment rights. I'm truly sorry for that. And I, I hope that things like that-
I got, I got two minutes, okay? That's all to give.
If you want, Mr. Diver, after Ms. Myers, Mrs. Myers comes up, you can finish your three minutes. But I'm gonna let Mrs. Myers go, since she's at the podium currently.
I'm happy to let Gary stand back up here if he likes.
I appreciate that.
Would you like to come back up and finish?
It don't make any difference. I'm a very conservative person. I didn't go out and campaign like a lot of other people. I haven't smeared anybody else. But anyway, that's beside the same point. Anybody familiar with this coat right here? Anybody know what that stands for?
FFA.
Hmm? I was in the FFA when I was in school. In fact, this week is FFA convention in Indianapolis, Indiana, where thousands of kids are being there for FFA degrees and things. And my point is, when I was in school, when I was in FFA, we learned leadership. We learned stewardship. We learned respect. And if I'm elected City Council member, that is my goal, to be a leader, to be respectful, and to be a steward of the city of Buscira. 2000, I believe in prayer. 2020, I had COVID. I was one or two hours from dying. If it wasn't for the prayers of people that I know, friends, neighbors, and so on, I would not be here today. I think prayer is essential, whether you're doing it kneeling beside your bed, at the dinner table, or even in government meetings such as this, I think it is essential. Without prayer in our lives, we cannot be united. Okay? One other thing. Everybody knows what it says behind that $20 bill there? "In God We Trust." How many of us believe that? How many of us believe that? Okay, I'm standing here as a citizen of Buscira, and the citizens of Buscira would like to have your vote. Thank you.
After you state your name and address, I'll start the clock.
Okay, thank you. Rachel Myers, 421 West Oakwood. I don't have anything eloquently written out like Alina has. I have a few things to say. One, as far as Cory had brought up at the podium, it is disgusting to see these political campaigns using children, especially my own child, to hurt Kevin. Our child is a special needs child, and having his photo, photoshopped is absolutely reprehensible. My other concerns were the flagrant disregard by you, yourself, for the city ordinances. I know that Mike tried to cite you, and you refused to sign his citation today. Is that true, Mike?
There wasn't a signature space on the-
Okay. I thought you had said something about he refused it in some fashion.
No, he took possession of it.
Okay. My apologies. I thought that's what Mike had said today when I was here. I know that Bruce repeatedly asked you to not do what you're doing with your truck. You're putting the city liability of being sued by parking the Greg White truck in the parking lot here in Uptown. And I, I am slightly disappointed with our police force for not enforcing the city ordinances. I'm not quite sure what has happened with that. I do know that Bruce wanted to have it moved, because you are repeatedly breaking the law with no regard to the city ordinances. And you told me personally on Saturday, you did not care, because it was not a criminal penalty, that it was a monetary penalty, and you are happy to pay the fine to do what you want. And that is so disrespectful to our community. And I hope you know that. And I hope you know that other people see your lack of respect for our community. I was going to talk about Kelly Patterson's contract, but I understand that that's going to be brought up by someone else here today. I got three minutes, my guy. So I will not waste my time on that, because I believe that the internet has seen today that you signed a contract for $35 an hour to pay Kelly Patterson to train Michelle as the clerk, even after you have repeatedly disparaged fellow council members for voting for pay raises, which is mind-boggling, because the city already is in financial trouble, as you repeatedly like to tell people over and over again, and take no ownership of that fact. But my real question, and I will gladly stand here for 2 minutes and 43 seconds that's left on that clock, will be the public records request of mine that I have sent you over and over again, that you are choosing to ignore. I have emailed you multiple times. I have called you, left you voicemails. I've responded to those voicemails with emails to make sure that you received my voicemails. I have asked you in person, I asked you here today, repeatedly- I asked you here today repeatedly when you kicked me out of chambers, which you weren't even in here when I came to see Michelle, when that started. So again, who is the admin of the Bucyrus City Council Facebook page? Vicki used to be an admin. Kevin used to be an admin. Bonnie used to be an admin. Miranda used to be an admin. But you removed them all so that you could have complete control. However, you deactivated your Facebook account in September of this year. And if you are the only admin and you deactivate your Facebook page, that page ceases to exist. I know that. I'm a business owner. I have a Facebook page. You have to have an active account. So my question to you is, who is the current admin of the city's Facebook page? Who is actively posting on the city's Facebook page? I got a minute and 36 seconds, and I will stand here and make it as awkward as possible because you are refusing to fulfill my records request. I've asked for the logs, which would show who's posting what. I've asked for the author of the last 50 Facebook posts and several other things. That is a 54 public records requests you are refusing to fulfill. And I will, just like you are currently suing the city for unfulfilled records requests as well as Elmer and Carolyn Shireman, I will take this to the court of claims, and you will cost the city money because you won't tell me who the admin of the Bucyrus City Council Facebook page is. Grow up. Who is the admin, Kurt? 58 seconds. I will stand here. Who is the admin of the Bucyrus City Council Facebook page? You're willing for me to sue the city because you will not tell me that information. I don't want to sue the city. I love this town. You are currently suing the city on multiple levels because you're a child. Tell me who the admin is of the Bucyrus City Council Facebook page, which is a government forum that is totally subject to public records requests. 20 seconds, Kurt. I'm still standing here. The whole town is going to see that you are unwilling to do the very basic... You could just say, "I'm not. I gave it to Greg White. Greg White's the admin." Or, "I made a Facebook page to be the admin." It's simple answers, and you are refusing. You are jeopardizing the financial wellness of our city.
Time is up, Mrs. Myers. Next public participation.
Thank you, Rachel. Mr. President, unless there's any other participation from the audience, I would like to speak.
There's no spot on the agenda here for you to speak right now, Vicki.
I've never been...
I'm going to start enforcing that.
Vicki, I'm sure you'll allow me to come back. May I ask...
That's up to us.
He doesn't have to let me back in. You have to let me back in. So then I will go to the podium. I will ask to be excused. And then, once I'm done talking, I will ask to come back in.
I grant your excuse to be excused.
At the October 14th...
You've got to say your name now.
Oh, excuse me. Excuse me. Vicki DeShawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, Bucyrs. At the October 14th, 2025, regular council meeting, resident Greg White stated he was concerned because the council clerk said ethically and morally she had resigned. White questioned, and I quote, "What's going on in our city council?" The council clerk he was referring to was Kelly R. Patterson Tussie. I too am concerned about what's going on. However, my concern is with Council President Fankhauser and the recent actions he has taken. I outline the following facts, supported by documentation for your information. One, Resolution Number 222-2023 and Resolution Number 224-2025 passed by council for the appointments of former council clerks Miranda G. Wise and Kelly R. Patterson Tussie set forth hourly pay rates and availability of health insurance and sick leave entitlements, et cetera. One of these or one of those entitlements is that of not more than 56 hours personal leave per year on a prorata basis. After serving almost two years as council clerk, Wise resigned. She had 41 hours of unused personal leave at $25.25 per hour totaling $1,035.25. Fankhauser refused to sign her timesheet, thereby not authorizing payment. After serving just under one month as council clerk, Patterson Tussie resigned. She had 28 hours of unused personal leave at $25.25 per hour totaling $707. Fankhauser signed her timesheet, thereby authorizing payment. On October 20th, 2025, Fankhauser entered into an Ohio independent contractor agreement with Kelly R. Patterson Tussie to provide city council clerk training services. The agreement states that client is the city of Bucyrs and client representative is Kurt Fankhauser, council president. The agreement, among other things, states that it can be terminated at any time by mutual written agreement of the parties. On October 21st, 2025, Fankhauser and Patterson Tussie executed Schedule B to the agreement. Schedule B sets forth that Patterson Tussie's work hours are not to exceed 25 hours per week, and she shall be paid $35 per hour. Both the agreement and exhibit were not prepared by or provided to Law Director Gobrick for his review as the city's legal counsel. Both the agreement and exhibit were not provided to council members for our review and comment. Number three, in an October 20, 2025 Mansfield News Journal article written by Zach Tuggle on council clerk Michelle Mossdeller's hiring, it states the following. "The clerk could earn time and a half for working longer than 40 hours each week, but Fankhauser said overtime has rarely been approved by any council president because of budget constraints. Instead, the clerk earns flex time for working late meetings throughout the week, then typically uses those accruals to leave early Friday afternoon. While serving recently as council clerk, Patterson Tussie did not use flex time. Instead, Fankhauser authorized overtime payment to her for 14 hours at $37.875 per hour totaling $530.25." As a recap, since it is council that approved the resolution authorizing the appointment of Clerk Wise and the benefit she is entitled to, I do not believe Fankhauser had the authority to withhold payment of her unused personal leave. I spoke today with Auditor Lewis, and she stated that in order for payment to be made by her to Wise, she only needs for her file a copy of council meeting minutes setting forth motion second and roll call vote approving payment by Lewis to Miranda G. Wise of unused personal leave totaling $1,035.25. Now, I will end my talk here, and then I ask to be allowed to go back to my seat, and then I will finish this with a motion as a council representative. So, permission to go back? I'm assuming council's...
Council has to make a motion.
Motion to allow this Hillcrest Drive resident to return to her seat behind the railing and resume her duties as council member.
Second.
Mr. Myers made a motion, seconded by Councilwoman Sherick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Vicki, you're allowed to come back behind the railing.
So, with that being said, I hereby move that payment totaling $1,035.25 for 41 hours of unused personal leave be made to Miranda G. Wise by the auditor no later than Friday, November 7th, 2025.
I'll second that.
Mrs. DeShawn has made a motion, has been seconded by Councilwoman Sherick. Roll call vote?
Discussion.
Discussion.
May I ask a question of the auditor before we vote?
Yep.
Auditor Lewis, to your knowledge, has there ever been a time, and I'm just pulling out a number, in the last five to 10 years, has there ever been a time that we did have a council clerk leave that they were not paid their benefit time when they left?
So, they typically are not paid their personal time when they leave, but there's never been a time where it has been denied.
Okay. Thank you.
I will advise council that there is a pending lawsuit regarding that issue, so you may or may not want to take that into consideration when you have your vote.
Would you like to elaborate on this pending lawsuit? I'm not aware of what you're talking about.
It is, I believe, the civil suit 25 CV 0183 that I filed against the city in July.
Could you elaborate a little more on that for me, please?
I'm going to refer you to the lawsuit.
I'm named on that lawsuit, so I can inform you a little bit on that if you'd like.
If you would like to inform us, I would appreciate it.
It was a lawsuit for injunctive relief against the city of Bucyrs. Brandon Gobrick, Clarissa Slater, myself, and Deputy Auditor Kim Felkey were named on it. I believe he was suing the city for $75,000 against Brandon and $75,000 against Clarissa. Kim and I were not put in for any kind of monetary relief, but he was hoping to prevent the city from paying out Ms. Wise.
Thank you.
And I did receive just today, I believe, the lawyer for the city did motion to dismiss the case, but Mr. Fankhauser said he is, instead of representing himself, planning on getting a real lawyer to represent him.
Okay, I guess I'd like to continue with some discussion, and I really didn't want to have to ask a bunch of questions, but I guess now I will. So, as I've stated, council passed the resolution... We pass the resolutions that hire the council clerk that states what the hourly rate is and the benefits available to that clerk. So could you explain to me, Mr. Fankhauser, how you can or why did you deny payment to one clerk? And not deny... Why did you deny payment to one clerk, but you paid the other clerk? You paid another clerk?
I'm not going to answer that question at this time due to pending lawsuit.
Call for the vote.
Roll call vote, unless there's any more discussion? Is there any more discussion?
I'm wondering if it's wise to do this right now. If there is still a pending lawsuit, would it get us involved in it?
So is the lawsuit dismissed today?
No, it is being... They're changing it to January. I believe it's going to be a hearing at the courthouse.
So the lawsuit, you are, if I'm understanding correctly, is Kurt is suing so that he doesn't want you to pay?
Yes.
Or doesn't want the city to pay?
Yes. He had... I can't remember exactly, but basically the portion that involved Kim and I was that he did not want the auditor's office to pay out Miranda Wise for any kind of personal Also, just so you know, the lawsuit was also filed with him as a taxpayer and not as the council president. So just wanted to put that out there as well.
And in this case, we can't ask the law director what his opinion is because he's named in the suit.
You know what? There comes a point in time when someone has to say enough is enough. I'm not afraid of you, Kurt. So yes, I call for a vote. You said roll call?
Roll call.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn? Yes. Slater?
As of right now, no.
Sherick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
There is enough votes for it to pass, so that motion passes. Moving on with the agenda. Is there any additional public participation? Say none. We have the portion of the agenda regarding minutes, April 22nd, 2025, public hearing minutes that have been amended. They are before you right now. Does anybody have any discussion or questions regarding those minutes? We're going to vote on these individually because I think Vicki wants it that way. So the April 22nd, 2025, public hearing amended.
Motion to approve. Is that what?
Mr. President, excuse me.
Mrs. DeShawn.
I'm perfectly fine. You never asked me what I wanted, and I'm perfectly fine with...
The first three.
Yeah, the first three collectively.
I'll amend my motion to approve the first three, which is April 22, April 24, and August 7.
I'll second that.
Mr. Myers made a motion to amend the first motion, and he is now including the April 24th, 2025, special council meeting and the August 7th, 2025, special council meeting into the original motion. It was seconded by Councilwoman Sherick, so this is just a vote to amend the original motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion has been amended. Now before us, we have the now amended motion to accept the minutes presented before you, which now include the April 22nd, 2025, public hearing amended, the April 24th, 2025, special council meeting amended, and the August 7th, 2025, special council meeting amended.
So, vote.
Second.
Mr. Myers made a motion. Ms. Sherick seconded. Any discussion?
I'll abstain from the first two. I'll abstain from the council.
Yeah, I have to abstain from the first one.
Well, it's still a single vote, so we're still voting on them as a whole at this point. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It passes. Next, we have the August 19th, 2025, special ad hoc meeting. These were emailed by Councilwoman Sherick on September 9th, September 15th, and the clerk emailed them to all the council members on September 30th. This is being presented to full council because the ad hoc committee had been disbanded.
Mr. President?
What does this be signed off by the committee members part of the...
That's my question.
Were they not signed off on?
No. They're never going to be signed off on.
I think, if I may, in the past, we've had them printed up, and the members of that committee would have to physically come in and sign, and then present it to council.
If that's the way you guys want to do it, we can table it, get signatures.
Motion to table the remaining two.
Second.
Mr. Myers made a motion to table the August 19th, 2025, and the September 2nd, 2025, seconded by Councilwoman Sherick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Those are now tabled.
And I'm abstaining.
Vicki has abstained. Moving on with the agenda. Communications and petitions. We have the Tourism Bureau third quarter report.
May I ask a question of you, Mr. President?
Mr. Myers.
I'm only asking this because I don't know the exact answer. Do you have any recollection? But I believe that the agreement, the Tourism Bureau, was that they were to come and give a report in person quarterly. Am I correct on that, or...
I don't know if it says that or if we can request. I'm not...
It says we can request.
If we request them to come, they will come.
Okay.
It's not automatic that they have to be here.
Gotcha. My apologies for misunderstanding.
No, it's your pleasure asking.
So do we want to make a motion to accept and file their third quarter report?
So, vote.
Second.
Mr. Myers made a motion. Mr. Moritz seconded to accept and file the Tourism Bureau's third quarter report. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That is the... That is accepted and filed.
Quite a clarification.
Mr. Myers.
I think you just said first quarter, but you meant third quarter.
Third quarter. Scrivener error.
Yep.
Standing committee reports.
Did you see Scrivener?
Yeah.
Because it's Scrivener, I think, isn't it? Scrivener error.
And it's still written, it goes with the Scrivener.
You knew what he meant.
Yeah.
Standing...
Excuse me for interrupting.
Standing committee reports, Economic Development Committee, which due to the absence of Councilwoman Slater, the vice chair, Mrs. DeShawn, do you have a standing committee report for economic development?
No, I have no report.
Any questions regarding economic development? Seeing none. Finance Committee Chair, Mr. Myers.
Nothing reported this time.
Any questions for Finance Committee? Seeing none. Health and Safety Chairwoman, Mrs. DeShawn.
Tonight, um, we will have our first reading on the taxicab licensing legislation. And also tonight, we will be having the reading on the peddlers and solicitors law, which is an emergency legislation.
Any questions for health and safety? No questions for health and safety. Plating Committee Chairman, Mr. May.
No.
Any questions for plating? Seeing none. Service Committee Chairman, Moritz. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was going to say...
Public Lands and Buildings Chairwoman, Ms. Sherrick.
Nothing at this time.
Any questions for Public Lands and Buildings? Seeing none. Service Committee Chairman, Moritz.
I have received the newest updates for the nine hundreds, Title nine hundreds, with amendments and deleted sections. I think I passed them on to everybody today.
Yep.
So we all have a chance to look at it. Obviously, we're not going to pass it Thursday, but it's still got, I think, really only one section still needs to be looked at, and that's with Dylan. Still has to do the traps and all that stuff. The underground meters and everything.
Do you know if they'll have that ready for Thursday?
I will make a call and run and see where he's at on it.
Be nice to invite him to be sure we can finalize that.
He's been taking some time off. He's had some health issues, cold or whatever, but that will... Hopefully, we'll get some kind of answer Thursday. Also, uh, I think everybody needs to remember, just keep in mind that we do have a levy on the ballot, and it is for the poll. So keep in mind that when you're going to vote, that that levy is on there, that price, that we're financed, but I'm saying it now.
And that's it.
Any questions for Service Committee? Seeing none. Special Ad Hoc Committee for Rules of Procedure, Chairwoman DeShawn.
On September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five, I met with Law Director Gobrick, Councilperson Scheffler Slater, to review, discuss, and edit a draft ordinance prepared by Gobrick for enacting a new chapter one-one-one entitled Council, Rules of Council, and chapter one-one-two entitled Ethics and Penalties. At the October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five council meeting, Law Director stated, I believe he was doing it in jest, I hope, stated that I broke his heart when, after we had met for four hours, I sent him an email later that day saying maybe we should start over. I did send Gobrick an email the next day stating in part that I did not find his draft user-friendly after I had reviewed it that evening. It wasn't user-friendly to me so far as easy reference to subject matters, and I preferred the current chapter one-one-one outline and layout and would like to see the chapter used with insertion of his suggested revisions. On September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, I sent an email to Gobrick requesting a copy of his draft with the additional revisions discussed by the three of us. I sent again an email on October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, requesting this copy and stating that while I did not find the outline or layout user-friendly, I am just one of four committee members, and I wish to forward a copy of his draft to the committee members for review and discussion at an upcoming special, at an upcoming special ad hoc meeting yet to be scheduled. I did have two questions. They both were for Mr. Gobrick. First one was, when can I expect to receive a copy of the draft?
Not tonight.
And then the second one was going to be, when does the ad hoc committee wish to meet? So I guess I won't get answers to either of those questions because I really don't want to schedule a meeting not knowing when. But anyhow, um, that's the end of my report of what's happening with them.
Any questions for the ad hoc committee? Seeing no questions, moving on. Special Ad Hoc Committee for Property Maintenance, Mr. May.
No report.
Any questions for that ad hoc committee? Seeing none. Special Ad Hoc Committee for Zoning Map, Mr. May.
No report.
Any questions for that ad hoc committee? Seeing none. Traffic Commission, since Mayor Trug is not here, we won't go into that one. At this point, I need a motion to accept the committee reports collectively.
So make a motion.
Mr. Moritz made the motion. Mr. Myers seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Report of city officers. We do not have a mayor's report. We do not have a service director's report. We do not have a law director's report. We do not have an... Do we have an auditor's report?
Um, no. As today was the first business day of the month, we were busy doing month ends today. I did have three referrals to finance. One appropriations for the electric. Two, end-of-year appropriations. And three, end-of-year reduction of appropriations. And on a personal level, I would just like to tell the fifteen-year-old boy who came to the podium that it might not mean a lot, but I'm very proud of him.
Yes.
Took a lot of bravery.
Yes, a hundred percent.
Okay, you have appropriations to electric?
For electric.
For electric. Appropriations for end-of-year transfers?
No, end-of-year appropriations. And then end-of-year reduction of appropriations. So they should be three separate things. The last two are not going to be prepared by Thursday. I just wanted them to be referred, so they're ready to go by the end of the year.
I'll make a motion to refer all three of those to finance. I'm sorry.
I would have seconded.
Uh, Mr. Myers made the motion, seconded by Councilwoman Sherrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
So isn't this Bruce's?
Yeah, we're going to bring it up, new business.
Okay.
Any questions for the auditor? Seeing no questions for the auditor. Treasurers report, we do not have one. Police Chiefs report. Do you want to give your report, Mr. Police Chief?
And I would like to also say that was a great job. And he spoke very well, and I'm proud of you. All right, I've changed this probably half a dozen times on which direction I wanted to speak tonight. But I'm going to keep my mission simple, you know, because one of the things, what I said I wanted to do as chief, is be great with community relations, and I'm going to keep doing that. This past month, one of the things what we did is we did a ten-spooktacular. And whenever we were out there, everything was going well. We was having a good time. And then some strange blue frickin' smurfs started running all over the place. And I got a little nervous until I realized it was actually people who worked here, so it was a little bit better. But it was, you know, a really good time. And I was pleasantly surprised at how many people did a ten-spooktacular. It was a great event this year, and I'm really glad that, you know, the turnout was really well, and hopefully next year it'll be even better. We also, oh, Officer Wireman and I went to High Road School of Bucyrus. That was the first time I was in there, and I tell you what, that was a great experience. We had lunch with these young guys and girls, and they made a lot of artwork for us, and we really made their day, you know. And I'm really looking forward to going back there. And it was, it was a really good experience. They had fun, we had fun. And next month, we'll be back. And we also go to other schools, too. Dispatcher Gerger and I went to the elementary school. We passed out candy for trick-or-treat. And, you know, we just want to have more public relations. We're going to try to... Aaron, I'm going off script. I'm sorry. You're like, you didn't write that. I'm sorry. Also, this past month, I was, I was asked to... We had to do the security for the Republican Party. They were honoring veterans on October twenty-seventh. And keynote speaker Vivek Ramaswamy was going to be there. It was a huge event, and a lot of people were coming out. And they said, oh, by the way, you have to do security for this event. And by the way, I, I, that was, it was a shock because I'm like, what am I going to do? You know, with today's political atmosphere going the way it is, I initially panicked. And then I remembered a couple of colleagues of mine. So I reached out to Commander Reich from the State Highway Patrol and Sheriff Kent. Worked with those two gentlemen for a number of years. And whenever I called them, Commander Reich's like, absolutely, I'll help you any way I can. We had a couple undercover OSP officers in plainclothes in there. We also had a couple, a drone from OSP. And Sheriff Kent got us to activate the SRT team, and they also had another drone. I want to thank the men and women who did help with that event because it went smoothly. But back whenever he was there, he gave a great speech. We honored a veteran there. I believe he was a hundred and one years old. Which, it was, it was a great time. Good turnout. Hopefully, next time, whenever we do an event like that, they'll give me a little bit more notice other than a few days to say, hey, put together the security, and hopefully everything goes smoothly. But everything worked out well, and it was just another way of showing how when we can pull our resources together, we can all do this together, you know. And as far as pulling resources together, once again, like I said, I threw the script out. I changed it a hundred times. I struggled with something recently, what came up. Whenever, I read an article about the closing of Diamond Lips, you know, and the mention of how the city's going to be affected and how we're going to... It's not about us, I'm sorry. You know, there's forty families who are going to be struggling around the holidays, you know. To say it's a police officer, it's the equivalent, I don't care. You know, I'm looking at, there's forty people who might need help during the holidays. We can't even think about the city of Bucyrus right now. They are the city of Bucyrus. We need to think about those people. All right. We are going to do some things as a department, but I'm not going to tell anybody about it because we don't need any recognition, but we're going to try to help out any way we can. Because I didn't grow up very wealthy, you know. But whenever I hear about people struggling, I'm going to do everything I can to help them out. So that being said, like I said, I changed the script a hundred times. As a police department, I do like the direction we're going. I don't want things to be, you know, the fire department has X number of dollars. The police department's budget is this much. They're making that... We're not doing that. Those guys, their job is very important, so is ours. So are the people in this building. You know, everybody has a different role under different capacity. Everybody's role is very important. That being said, I also am not going to change the direction and the vision I have for this department because I'm not going to say, you know what, we'll take a backseat and push another department ahead of us. Or we won't do this because, no. I still think that our department needs everything that we need. We are going to have... My radio down so I don't get distracted. I'm sorry. We do need equipment. We do need people. We do need to keep going the direction we're going. But we also need to stay focused on, you know, how many people are here. We have the same crimes as big cities, but we just don't have it as often. This past month, we had, on our traffic stops, people had crack cocaine, they had meth, they've had fentanyl. You name it, we found them in these cars, you know. And there's needles, syringes. These officers are finding them. And a lot of times, there's an officer sitting desk, two people on the road, because that's all we got. That's not enough, and it's not acceptable. Now, I could sit back there and be quiet and not say anything, but that would be foolish on my part to do that, and it's not fair to the citizens, and it's not fair to my department. So that's why, like I said, I changed my script a hundred times. I'm not going to do it again. So... This weekend, we are still... We are still taking applications up to November seventh because our test is good for two weeks, or two years, I'm sorry, our eligibility list for dispatch and patrol. So even though we are still hiring, we are still putting the eligibility list, it's November seventh is our deadline, and it's good until, for two years after, after the deadline. Questions?
You said you're taking applications till the seventh, and the test is on the...
Our fitness test is on the ninth, but the civil service exam is on the sixteenth.
Did you have a firearm discharge in the city?
I'm sorry.
You have a firearm discharge?
Uh, yes, there was a call where officers responded where, it was a call to where a person was waiting for another person, and a shot was fired at that person. Fortunately, they didn't hit, or we would have a whole lot different crime, but we didn't charge that individual with attempted murder because the incant was still there. That was earlier in the month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the... We do not have a fire chief report. So I need a motion to accept and file the city officers' reports.
So...
Second.
Ms. Sherrick made the motion. Mr. Spiegel seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Visitors input regarding standing slash special committees and of city officers, is there any visitors' input?
Would I be permitted to give a response to the chief?
Yeah.
Chief, one of the things that I heard from some of the, I guess you'd call it the stack, the staff of the gentleman running for governor, was that of all the places they've already been thus far, they had not seen cooperation with other departments within the jurisdiction area like they did here, and they were very taken aback by that in a good way. But they mentioned that other towns that they go to, the sheriff doesn't deal well with the police or vice versa, and patrol and all that. So I just wanted to, as you were speaking on that, I wanted to point that out, that their staff took notice of that, and I overheard that.
Mrs. DeShawn.
I was remiss in not welcoming our new council clerk, Michelle Mosteller. She and I have had conversations, and she knows I'm a focused person, tend to think of work, 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 and forget about the, maybe niceties of things. But anyhow, I do apologize for not welcoming you at the beginning of the meeting, but we're getting ready to go into the nitty-gritty, so...
I do want to apologize for that as well. Michelle started working two weeks ago, and she has been assisted by former clerk Kelly Patterson, and it's been going great. And we're looking to continue that. And we're looking to continue that. And she's doing great.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on. Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time. We have, okay, this is where you read the proposed ordinance 35-2025 and then the... That is true.
Yeah, we don't have it.
We don't have the 36-20...
I have it pulled up if you'd like me to read it for you, sir.
I have it here in front of me.
That's the second reading.
That's the second reading.
You want me to read it for you?
Well, Vicki, do you have it?
Well, it, it'll, it won't.
When it's tied, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we're on just the first time.
Yeah. Let me take a look at what I handed you because I've got another one here, too. Want to make sure you have the right one. Remember, this was the one where we... Yes, please.
Vicki wants that back. She doesn't know she gave you the right one or not. She's got two of them.
This is one where we had three of them. For a city payment therefore, companies, we are at, now they're four, they're doing section. Is here, Bob?
Yep, we're good. Ordinance number 37-2025, amending and supplementing Chapter 381 et sec, entitled Taxi Cab Licensing, under Title 11, entitled Licensing, under Part 3, entitled Traffic Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bucyrus.
Kurt, you may want to move the microphone over. Michelle's quiet.
Quiet. Ordinance number 43-2025, amending and supplementing Ordinance Number 40-2024, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2025, by appropriating from unappropriated general funds, the sum of $30,000 to the contractual services line item within the street lighting category, within the Program 1, Security of Persons and Property, subparagraph within the General Fund, further appropriating from unappropriated general funds, the sum of $20,000 to the contractual services line item within the General Government category, and $3,000 to the Materials and Supplies Line item within the Auditor category, and $7,000 to the Refund, Refunds Line item within the Administration category, with all four said line items and categories being within the program. Seven, General Government, subparagraph within the General Fund. And finally, appropriating from unappropriated local fiscal recovery special revenue funds, fund, funds, the sum of $35,000 to the Capital Outlay Line item within the Water Works Distribution category, within the Local Fiscal Discovery Special Revenue Fund, subparagraph with the Local Fiscal Recovery Special, Special Revenue Fund, and declaring an emergency.
And that second fund, where it says Fund, Fund, I know it sounds repetitious, but that's the correct...
Thank you.
That's the correct title, Fund, Fund.
Thank you. Ordinance number 44-2025, amending and supplementing Ordinance Number 40-2024, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2025, by decreasing the current balance in the Personal Services Line item by $5,000 within the Council category, within the Program 7, General Government, subparagraph within the General Fund, and increasing the current balance in the Contractual Services Line item by $5,000 within Council category, within the Program 7, General Government, subparagraph within the General Fund, further by decreasing the current balance in the Contractual Services Line item by $10,000 within the Lands and Businesses category, within the Park and Recreation Land, subparagraph, within the Park and Recreation Land Fund, and increasing the current balance in the Personal Services Line item by $10,000 within the Parks and Playgrounds category, within the Park and Recreation Land, subparagraph, within the Park and Recreation Land Fund. And finally, by decreasing the current balance in the Personal Services Line item by $20,000 within the Distribution category, within the Water Works, subparagraph, within the Water Works Fund, and increasing the current balance in the Debt Retirement Line item by $20,000 within the Debt Retirement category, within the Water Works, subparagraph, within the Water Works Fund, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 45-2025, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 711 of the Bucyrus Codified Ordinances, entitled Peddlers and Solicitors Law, under Part 7, entitled Business Regulation Code of the City of Bucyrus, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Resolution 235-2025 hereby approving the adoption of the Bucyrus City Investment Policy.
Okay, any motion accepted as a first reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Myers made the motion, seconded by Mr. Moritz. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Public participation, any member of the general public may input, present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the first time. Seeing no public participation. Uh, consideration of proposed legislation for the second time.
Ordinance number 36-2025, amending and supplementing Ordinance Number 22-2012, provided, providing for lighting of railways by Norfolk Southern in the City of Bucyrus, Ohio, by providing for additional light power, setting forth the amount to be charged for said lighting, and by providing the manner of payment therefore, finally, that the Service Safety Director of the City of Bucyrus be, and he hereby is authorized and directed to send semi-annual statements for said cost to said railroad company.
Any motion accepted as a second reading? Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Spiegel seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the second time. Seeing no public participation. These are referred back to the originating committee. Proposed ordinance 36-2025 is referred back to Health and Safety. Proposed ordinance 37-2025 is referred back to Health and Safety. Proposed ordinance 43-2025 is referred back to Finance Committee. Proposed ordinance 44-2025 is referred back to Finance Committee. Proposed ordinance 45-2025 is referred back to Health and Safety. Proposed resolution 235-2025 is referred back to Finance Committee. Committee report on pending legislation. Health and Safety Committee.
Health and Safety Committee is favorable to proposed ordinance number 36-2025, dealing with Norfolk Southern signal rates. Health and Safety Committee is also favorable to proposed ordinance number 37-2025, dealing with taxi, taxi cab licensing. Do you want me to do, okay. And then Health and Safety Committee is favorable to proposed ordinance number 45-2025, dealing with Peddlers and Solicitors Law.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 43-2025, the appropriations. Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 44-2025, transfers. And Finance is favorable to proposed resolution 235-2025, City Investment Policy.
Okay, further consideration of pending legislation. Okay. Ordinance 37-2025, which is the taxi licensing, actually, that's just regular. We're not doing that one right now. 43-2025, which is the appropriations. For the second and third reading, a proposed ordinance 43-2025, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency? Mr. Myers made the motion, seconded by Councilwoman Sherrick. Yeah, roll call.
Um, Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn? I'm sorry, Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Slater? Moritz?
Yes.
That motion passes for, do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 43-2025?
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Moritz seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Slater?
Um, ordinance 43-2025 is duly adopted. Moving on, ordinance 44-2025, which is the appropriations, or transfers with outside contracts, and I, I... What are you shaking your head about, Vicki?
It's just transfers.
Okay, it's, it's just...
We had more than one transfer.
It's just transfers.
So you don't say with outside contract.
And I'm, I'm just gonna... Since it was brought up, about this $35 an hour that I signed a contract with, with former clerk Patterson. We discussed at the last Finance Committee meeting the possibility of adding a part-time clerk on the billlet, and... This needs to be talked about. This needs, the citizens of Bucyrus want to know what this $35 contract an hour is about. Mr. Moritz?
Should it be 25, not 35, or is it 35?
It's 35.
Okay.
Okay. So, you know, we got a new clerk hired and there's the issue of the training. So I, at the last Finance Committee meeting, I brung up adding on the billlet, like it used to be, this other position, the part-time clerk or whatever. And I was told, I believe by Mr. Myers, can't you just do it as a 1099 contractor? And I said, yeah, we could. So, um, then we were looking at the contract line because we can't pay the clerk, we can't pay a contractor out of the regular line of clerk salary. It would have to be in the contract line in the budget. So that's where this idea come up of transferring $5,000 because we had no clerk for several months, so that line had plenty of money in it. So to move it to the contract line, the money was there. And so it was decided at that meeting that that would be thrown onto this transfer legislation. So in the meantime, you know, we're several weeks out between the next meeting and we need training for the clerk now because we have a clerk working for several weeks and the transfer hadn't happened yet. Well, I find out in the budget, there's actually already some money in the contractor line item. I believe it's probably there for the water drain thing that needs done towards the end of the year. So with anticipation of this piece here passing tonight, and we didn't need the money paid to water drain yet, I decide I'm gonna sign a contract with former clerk Patterson and use what's already, what's in that line. And that would get us going for the immediate two to three weeks there that we need training for the clerk. I made it $35 an hour and my justification for that is 1099, when you 1099 somebody as a contractor, they're, they're not keeping that full hourly rate. There's taxes, they have to pay their own taxes in that situation.
They pay taxes out of their regular pay, too, not that rate.
Okay.
Okay, just asking.
Yeah. And with the experience, the past, uh, um, experience that clerk Patterson had in the past, I felt that she was worth the $35 contracted rate. I fully stand behind that, I will defend that to anybody that questions it. I've already been questioned by it, by at least one council member. And you know what? I don't see a lot of people lining up to be clerks or training of clerks in this town right now. So that's what it is. Mr. Myers, do you have something?
What I don't understand is you could have called a special meeting at any time and said, hey, this is what I want to do.
I can't call a special meeting. The council president cannot call a special meeting. It can only be called by the mayor or I believe it's either three or four council members. So you guys decided that you were gonna do this legislation and then made no provisions for the two weeks there in the middle. So I took it upon myself what I had to do to ensure that the office was properly ran. And we've been getting along great. We've been getting along great. It has been so great the last two weeks. Kelly and Michelle working together. And I see on this ordinance 43-2025 from Vicki's draft, she's already, or 44-2025, she's already intending to not waive the second and third reading by her no she has wrote on here. Due to Ms. Slater being absent, we wouldn't have the required votes to waive the second and third reading if Vicki votes no, which is going to totally mess up this entire week in the office by not having this transfer done. Mrs. DeShawn?
Um, if I could add to your talk of clarifying why you've done what you've done. You made the comment that, um, because there's been no clerk for a couple of months, we had this extra money in the line item.
In the salary line item.
Salary line item. I do wish to remind everybody that, yes, there is additional money in that salary line item, but $1,035.25 of that money is for the personal leave that you have refused to pay to Council Burke Wise. And while I'm on that subject, because you're doing your explaining, I am asking if you would step back, do the proper thing, do away with your suit of not wanting payment made to Mrs., or to Ms. Wise. Let's just end... Let's just end this subject. Please.
You, who has sued the city how many times, is asking me to drop a lawsuit.
Order of the day, please.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Myers has called for orders of the day. We will proceed with, uh, the agenda and we are currently on ordinance forty-four dash twenty-two-five. The transfers ordinance. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance forty-four dash twenty-two-five, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
Yes. On the motion.
Mr. Moritz made the motion. Is there a second? This council is not properly doing their job to ensure that training can be done in the office by not passing this. I thank you, Mr. Moritz, for making the motion, but clearly the rest of these council members are dysfunctional. And I will tell that to the entire city. Dysfunctional members.
I think you're the one dysfunctional.
I'm dysfunctional.
Orders of the day, please.
Well, due to lack of a second, it appears that mo, that motion for this forty-four dash twenty-two-five is not gonna have enough to move forward. So...
It dies anyways, it doesn't matter.
It dies. It dies. I don't know how you guys think the office is going to be ran this week.
Can I add that Susan Baldwick, my alder, was a prior council clerk. And just so we don't incite anything with Michelle as a new clerk, any anxiety or anything, if you have questions, you can approach her. I'm sure she would help you.
You're part of the problem, Ms. Lewis.
Orders of the day, please.
Okay, we will proceed with the next ordinance, forty-five dash twenty-two-five, Peddlers and Solicitors. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance forty-five dash twenty-two-five, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded.
Um, Spiegel?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I forgot Myers, your first.
You can keep going.
Um, DeShawn?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Slater? Moritz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick, I'm sorry.
Okay. Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. I need a motion, or do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance forty-five dash twenty-two-five?
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Mr. Moritz seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes. Sorry, yes.
Sherrick?
Yep.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Slater?
Ordinance forty-five dash twenty-two-five is duly adopted. Um, the two thirty-five dash twenty-two-five is regular, so we're not going to do it. Um, excusing of council members that were absent. Um, Ms. Sl, Mrs. Slater had messaged the clerk at about 5:00 PM-ish that she was feeling sick and she would not be in attendance.
I'll make a motion to excuse the absent council member.
I'll second that.
Ms. Sherrick made the motion to excuse Councilwoman Slater, seconded by Councilman Spiegel. We're gonna do a roll call vote.
Myers?
No.
DeShawn?
No.
Slater? Moritz?
No.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Okay, we have a tie vote. We have three no votes and three yes votes. I'm gonna vote to break the tie at this time and I'm gonna vote no. Councilwoman Slater is not excused. Um, regular committee meetings. Referrals. Well, let's just hold off on that until we go through the new and the old business. Something else might come up. We're not gonna do the executive session due to the law director not being here. Old and unfinished business. Anybody have any old and unfinished business? Seeing none. New miscellaneous business. I had, somebody got ahold of me this week, or here in the last week, and said that the ladder truck is like out of service due to electrical issues. You knew anything about that, Mr. Myers?
No.
And there was, there might've been a fire out in the townships or something. They requested it and it was, uh, I kinda heard it on the scanner myself. But, uh, yeah, it's... And then I did have a follow-up text from somebody affiliated with the fire department saying it is out of service.
First I'm hearing, but...
Okay. I wish that the service director and the mayor were here to explain that, so...
You gotta look.
Also, new miscellaneous business. So the CRA appointments. We passed the CRA legislation on October 3rd. It was the Friday night meeting. And part of that is there's appointments to a CRA board that council is, I believe, has two appointments that they get to appoint. I think the mayor has two he gets to appoint, so...
Did you clarify is it the council or is it the council president?
No, it's the full council. It's, um, I don't know if it requires legislation or if it's a voice vote.
They have a voice vote, but...
With the law director absent, um...
Can I request that we table the mayor's request for Mr. Smith so that we can find out about our appointments and maybe do them all at the same time? Being that we were just handed this right before the meeting. I'd rather just hang on for a minute.
Yeah. So, um, the CRA appointments. You know, we, we, we passed the legislation on October 3rd. It was, um, like super emergency because it hadn't gone through committee. So it, it insinuated there was some pressing need for it. However, without the CRA appointments and the board forming, I don't know what, why it's no longer a pressing need or what exactly was going on with that.
Oh, Mr. Beck, I...
Mr. Myers?
I wanna clarify. I mistook the mayor's letter. His is for the CIC, so I take back what I said. It's, I don't wanna table the mayor's now that I just read it again and said it's CIC, not CRA.
Oh, oh, okay. Yeah, they're two different.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So you still wanna discuss the CRA appointments?
Well, you're saying that it's a matter of urgency. Have you been given any?
Well, I, I haven't been given anything. We passed the CRA legislation there at the October 3rd meeting. See, we actually, the meeting on October 2nd, which was supposed to happen, which if that meeting would've happened, that meeting didn't have the CRA appointments on it and a bunch of people were absent. So that meeting didn't happen. And then this, this meeting happened on the 3rd. I'm assuming that's why everybody wanted to reschedule was because they were so into needing this CRA legislation. And then once the CRA legis, legislation is passed, I hear crickets.
Can I cut you short and make a suggestion?
Mr. Myers?
The three people that could probably answer that question are not here. So I say table it. And if it's that important to them to take care of before our next meeting, they can call a special meeting.
Okay. Put table on that. While we got the two letters here, we got a letter from the mayor. He wants to nominate Rick Smith for, uh, CIC, effective November 1st for a period of four years. But you're saying you want to table that?
No, no. I, I misspoke when I was, in my head correlated that with the CRA.
Okay, that just needs a voice vote.
My only question, if I, sorry, I'm gonna interrupt you. Starting November 1st for a period of four years, does that mean through November 1st? Because typically these go through December 31st. Do we know?
We don't know.
All right, yeah.
I would put an end date. I would, I, this is what I would do. I would put an end date on it of like December 31st. If you guys go ahead and make the appointment, I would specify in the motion and vote through December 31st of whatever year.
I'll make a motion to accept the mayor's appointment of Rick Smith to the CIC effective November 1st for a period of four years, which would take us through 12/31 of 29.
Mr. Myers made the motion to appoint Rick Smith to the CIC effective November 1, 2025.
Point of clarity, the motion was to accept the mayor's appointment.
To accept the mayor's appointment of Rick Smith to the CIC effective November 1, 2025, throughout December 31st, 2029, seconded by Councilwoman Sherrick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Um, we did have another one here.
Mr. President?
Mr. Myers?
Uh, I just wanna point out, this also doesn't have a term. And I know that was a point of contention or a point of information when we were speaking about the Airport Commission previously where they proposed that stagger term. So I would like to table this unless you could provide a start and end date for this term before we make this appointment.
Because they, we're too sure words, but...
Yeah, I, I believe there's a document somewhere that shows the term dates.
Yeah, I think we need to have that with us.
Yeah, I agree. So since this, he's probably good through December 31st of this year, so we don't, we can table. We will table the Airport Commission. Okay. And then we have this Ms. Sherrick.
While we're still talking about, uh, 24 cities, I did talk to Mr. Ed McCarthy.
Oh, yes.
And yes, he's, he's all for staying.
Ed McCarthy is for staying. And that's on the Property Maintenance Appeals Board?
I believe so. I'm not sure which one it was. It was one of those similar ones.
Yeah, we could probably confirm.
Or is it the Building Standards and Appeals Board?
We'll, we'll confirm that then later.
Confirm and put it on our next agenda.
Did you get his contact information?
Yep, I did.
Okay. Uh, other thing on here, this ORC 731 dot 21, and I believe this is in your packet.
It is.
So it was brought to my attention that the state of Ohio changed the, where we have to legally publish past legislation. And one of those things that it used to have was it absolutely had to be in the newspaper.
Which costs a stupid amount.
But I believe due to, and, and in 2023, the state changed it and they no longer require it to be in a newspaper. And one of the sufficient things that it can be in is like the city website.
It had to be in two places. One was the city's website and then the other was a city-run page for legislation, which we don't currently have, but could easily...
Well, I, I think documents on demand would qualify.
Yeah, potentially, yeah. Would this be, what committee would handle that? Changing the legislation?
Well, I think it's the rules. Ad hoc rules. Because it's a rule of council, how we have it in our BCO 113. Our BCO 113 states that it shall be in the newspaper. So, yeah, this needs to refer to the ad hoc rules. Actually, the ad hoc rules...
Can I ask a question and a suggestion? Since the ad hoc committee is still tackling a lot of stuff and hasn't made substantial progress, can we refer this one matter to the, what would be Health and Safety Finance? I'm not sure who's...
It's not Health and Safety. If anything, it'd be Finance, but...
So that we can address that to stop the immediate expense of publishing?
Well, and, and, and we're spending like, I think our budget is somewhere between seven and ten thousand dollars a year for these newspaper publications. So, you know, that would free up significant money.
So could we refer that back to Finance then to address this one matter?
Yeah.
I'd like to make that referral.
I'll second that.
So Mr. Myers wants to refer the BCO 113 dot 01 to the Finance Committee, seconded by Councilwoman Sherrick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Any additional new business? Mrs. Sherrick, Ms. Sherrick?
The YMCA building? I'd like to refer that to Public Lands and Buildings if we have control of that now.
Um, I believe all city-owned properties are in fine, or in the Public Lands and Buildings Committee, so that would fall within that.
Just wanna make sure it's definitely in there legally. So, because the last time we tried to talk about something, we were told it wasn't. So I'd just like to make sure.
Yeah, well, all city properties are still in the Public Lands and Buildings. Okay, any additional new business? Seeing no additional new business, need a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry. Read the referrals. Gotta go through the referrals. Okay, there's three referrals that the auditor had gave.
Do you need an assist?
Yep.
Uh, the electric appropriations to finance, the end-of-year reductions...
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Myers. Where's that ref? Okay, Mr. Myers, what'd you have?
The electric appropriations to finance, the end-of-year reductions to finance, the end-of-year appropriations to finance, and BCO ele, or 113.01 to finance. All four motioned by myself and all four seconded by Ms. Sherrick. If that's on your form there.
That you told?
Okay, Mr. Myers had electric appropriations to finance, end-of-year appro, end-of-year reductions to fin, finance, end-of-year appropriations to finance, BCO 113 dot 01 to finance.
Can I ask for one moment to review something? I may have made an error. Vicki's looking at 113.01, does not mention anything about the newspaper. That's where we go hang them up.
Well, it talks about posting of legislation and it says, oh, my eyes. It talks about...
As an acceptable substitute for the previously required...
Full text publication in a newspaper of general circulation.
So it almost looks like you already don't have to put it in the newspaper.
So we've been paying for this all this time?
Yeah, and that was passed in 2020.
Nah, the state law changed in 2020.
I know, I know, but...
2000?
2000.
Wow.
Let's still have the referral so we can discuss this measure though.
Had a bit of that budget savings there.
Okay. Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. We are adjourned at 8:55 PM.